Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 31st, 2022 ZBA meeting. Our next meeting will be September 28th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and Rodney, if you could read in the preamble?
Yes. Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefits of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abuddies, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to the case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it's petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and the public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments made shall be directed toward the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
For anyone that's looking to speak tonight with a petition or for against a petition, if you could please raise your right hand so I can swear you in. All right, do you swear the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you. All right, so our first, actually before we get to the petitions, we do have a full board tonight, which is good. And the first petition that we're going to be looking at is S.J. Torres, petitioner and Oren H. Connell, family trust owner, variance under section 17.10 of the zoning ordinance to permit three major sign types, ground, wall, and roof on a single lot, whereas a maximum of two major sign types are permitted. Parcels located at 454 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2, general commercial, aquifer conservation, elderly housing, and town center overlay districts, tax map 5D-4, Lot 54, ZBA case 2022-28. If you just make sure that the microphone is lit up.
Now it is.
Absolutely. So before we get started, I understand there's four petitions in a row. And I did read through them, so there's a lot of similarities in the five points of law, but we have been asked to read through them individually. So if you could, I know it seems a little redundant to go through the five points of law for each one, but we do have to vote on them all separately.
Okay.
Just letting you know.
Okay. Can I, can I present it all? I, the, my argument is a little different than, you know, the, what we submitted. I want to bolster this record a bit with my oral argument. And I want to just, because it, I think we have to look at this and it, these signs a little differently. So I'd like to kind of present it as one, and then however you need to vote, if that's okay.
Absolutely, yeah, and you certainly don't have to repeat yourself each variance. I mean, I understand that it can be cumbersome to do that, so, yeah. You can, you can read through the, but we do have to kind of go through the five points of law and how they differentiate.
I will, I will. So I'm actually filling in for Matt Peterson. I'm Tony Bassel with Keach Nordstrom. He's on vacation, so he left me a whole bunch of cases. So I want to start with looking at this sign package as a whole. The, at first, when I first looked at this, I saw a lot of signs. I mean, they're, they definitely meet the definition of a sign. You know, they have logos and names and everything, no argument there. But when I drove out there and actually went on the site and kind of went through it and looked at what was going on there, I think it's a lot different than I initially thought. I mean, when I saw sign stuff in the pictures like this, you know, it's different than when you actually physically go out and see what's going on. The area in question is an outdoor eating area. I'm trying to find like a plan that will go good here. That's a sign. All right, it's rotated. Well, it's a sideways picture. I'm sure it's the way they rotated, but I'm technologically incompetent. So, anyway, these signs are in an area out in the back part of the site. They're in an area that is not, you know, like when you, when you look at the sign ordinance, why does the sign ordinance exist? It's to regulate signs that would, you know, clutter and confuse the motoring public. It, we, we regulate it to allow enough advertising for companies and businesses, but not to be like over cumbersome, you know, to the public, so we regulate it. And so, but these are signs that are generally out there to be seen by people driving by and stuff. These aren't. So these are in the back part of the site. They surround an outdoor dining area. So at first glance, I, you know, I looked at it, and it was like the wall sign, okay. And I was thinking about it, and like the, there's a wall sign on the backside of this pic, I think. Yeah, this one. No, one more. So that's one example of it. There's another one, though. Yeah, this one is another wall sign. It's on the back of the brick wall up on the side. There's photos in the package of them. But the, if you look at them, they're, they're actually like, that's an outdoor dining space, and that would be like akin to, you know, since we've had to go to, outdoor dining is a thing now in places we never would have done it before. Those containers were back there. It's storage for stuff for the restaurants. And, and, and all of a sudden, there you got to put outdoor dining spaces. And so you got to make it look decent. And so normally, this artwork, if you would, will, would be inside a building and unregulated. Pictures on the walls, signs just like what that, that picture was. That's a container one, but the other one, yeah. You know, it's things like that that are up there. And, you know, there, there's another one, too. And then the container, to make the container look better, it's a storage thing. But, so it's basically to decorate the outdoor seating area. It's not what you would normally have regulated with the sign ordinance. The sign ordinance is completely different. These aren't like, I tried to like, okay, can I see them from the road anywhere? You know, like, so I approached from every angle to try and see if like, if I'm driving by on DW Highway, can you go up any of those driveways and look up and can you, you know? They're really totally for the back of and for, and all these face and surround the seating area that's outside. And not what a typical sign is reg, why you would regulate, not what signs are. They're not, so I feel like this is different in that way. And so my arguments, I would, I will, you know, they're, they're the same for every one in the sense that, because they, they're all exactly the same thing. They're, they're here for an outdoor eating area, not for signage to identify the building. That's a one reason for signs. This is to, this is to beautify an area where people dine outside. So I think the arguments that are the same for all of them, which I'll happily, I'm gonna have to kind of ad lib it as I go, but I can certainly do the best I can with that.
Do you not have the, the, the five points that we're saying?
I certainly do, but that is not what my colleague wrote. This, I read this, and although these arguments are, are a way to go, my arguments, I think, are actually what's going on there. So I want to present it as such, so.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a, so it's, I, that's just in the record, and you guys are welcome to enjoy those. I would prefer to add my, because it's completely, I think this is a different take on this. I actually, when I looked at this, I didn't know how I could make those arguments. And I had to, so when I physically went out there and like saw what was going on, I completely, all right. I decided to change it tonight, that's all.
No, absolutely.
I'm gonna do it on, on the fly a little bit, so.
We totally, I mean, I, I totally understand the premise here. It's essentially wall decor on outside. It's not being used as an advertisement to bring in new customers. Totally understood, and that's, I mean, I understand why we're going through this. The reason why that we need you to read those five points of law is because we typically will stop to ask questions to.
Understood, and I'm gonna, so I'm gonna do the best I can to make, they're all identical. I'll do the best I can each time I do it, okay? So I'm gonna work my way through one and ad lib my way, and then you can answer, and then I'll, we'll try to do it again the same way.
Absolutely, yeah.
Same argument.
I read them all, and I see that they're very, they're amazingly similar. So, yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna ask you.
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm not gonna ask you to read it in word for word for each one, but just, just so that we can kind of pause and have questions.
When it, do you want to, so I presented my, the case. I'm ready to start doing this. Do you want to have people, a butter?
No, so our protocol is typically you provide, you, you tell us a little bit of history on what's going on here, and then we step through the actual application, the five points of law. So you would state something for, for example, one. It must not be contrary to the public interest because, and then you would either read word for word verbatim, which is usually what we prefer, but in this case, like I said, it would be a lot of reading.
Yeah.
Or, you know, just explain how what is happening here is not public to the, or not contrary to the public interest, which you've kind of already done. We understand that.
So I'm just gonna, oh, I get it.
Yeah, all right. It's, it's just for protocol.
No problem.
Thank you.
I happily, all right, so I'm gonna get started with these. So it must not be contrary to public interest because. I don't think this is contrary to public interest. Because, again, the, the public interest regarding the signs, it's, it's regarding signs that are visible, which is what we're saying in the argument here, visible from the main road. And it's meant, these are meant to be more artwork for the outside dining area. And, and the container, again, to decorate a container that is essentially, make it a little better looking than just a container, a storage area, and the dining area. So it's definitely in public interest. It beautifies the outside dining area of this place. Two must be.
Does, does anyone on the board have any questions about that?
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
I'd like to jump in.
Yes.
For clarity sakes, are we only discussing item number three on the agenda currently? Because that's what this should be.
So we are going to be discussing item three if, as we move to item four and five and six, I will allow him to ad lib the, the five criteria, since after reading these, this would be a lot of reading, so.
Okay, yes, we'd like to address each case one at a time.
Correct.
So I'm, that's what I'm doing, the first one.
Okay.
Can I clarify what we're, the first one is to allow three major sign types on the property where only two is allowed.
That's correct.
Not the specific signs themselves, but to allow that variance to allow for the three.
Right.
Okay, so that's what we're discussing now.
That's correct.
Good, okay.
All right, thank you. Number two?
Number two, it's within the spirit and consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. So again, the, the, the spirit and intent of the ordinance is to provide clarity for drivers making decisions and advertising for business, the balance between the two. That's what the spirit and intent is. I think that the signs here, because it's to beautify an outdoor dining area, does not, the extra signs are for that purpose, to decorate an outdoor area, not to bring, or bring traffic to the site. And it does not, and again, it's not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance because it's not cluttering the driving corridor with extra signage that is not needed.
Thank you. So Patrick, just to clarify, yeah, so I, I read through them all, and there's a lot of copy and paste, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does anyone on the board have questions about? All right, number three.
It must result in substantial justice. Well, substantial justice would be done because the applicant could have the area beautified for his customers.
All right, you can go on to number four.
Number four, all right. It must not diminish the property values, surrounding property values. The containers, the container art as well as the signs do not face any budding properties. There's no, no visible, no homes can't see it. It's really just for the outdoor quad area in the back specifically. So there's no one, no abutter can really get a, too much of a glimpse of it. So there's no effect to the property value.
Any questions from the board on that? All right, so number five, which is unnecessary hardship.
Okay. The special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. There is no substantial relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance, so this is the one important here, and a specific violation being applied. So we have extra signs, that's the violation being applied. But the substant, no substantial relationship, I say, is because the ordinance was not written for this purpose. It was written for a purpose that is not what these signs are there for. And these, and so therefore it is, there is no relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance in this case and the violation. And number two, the proposed use is a reasonable one. I think it is reasonable to decorate that outside area as much as possible for the patrons to enjoy there.
All right, thank you.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, so what I'll do at this point is just open it up to the public, and then we will go ahead and deliberate, because this seems very cut and dry. And I do appreciate you, especially in the beginning, explaining what you did, because you're right, that technically it's not really a sign.
Case to look at at first.
Yeah.
If you look at the paperwork alone.
Absolutely. So is there, I'll open the public now. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone looking to speak against this petition? I will close the public. Any comments or deliberation from the board? May I ask for a motion?
I will so move that we grant the variance to S.J. Torres, petitioner and Oren H. Connell, family trust owner, under section 17.10 of the zoning ordinance to permit three major sign types, ground, wall, and roof on a single lot, whereas a maximum of two major sign types are permitted. The parcel is located at 454 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2, general commercial, aquifer conservation, elderly housing, and town center overlay districts. Don't know if we have any others that are there. Tax map 5D-4, Lot 54, ZBA case number 2022-28.
All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, 5-0-0, so this passes. Absolutely, so we'll try to, we'll try to be as efficient as we can with the other three. All right, so.
So this allows the three types of signs to be there on anywhere, not just this restaurant, but the parcel.
This is just for the three different types.
Correct.
All right. So the next petition is S.J. Torres, petitioner, and Oren H. Connell, family trust owner, variance under section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit two additional ground signs for a total of three ground signs on a lot where one ground sign is permitted based on existing conditions. The parcel is located at 454 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2, general commercial, aquifer conservation, elderly housing, and town center overlay districts, tax map 5D-4, Lot 54, ZBA case 2022-24. So now we're just doing the same thing for, for this variance being the total of three ground signs, which I imagine is just the three.
So, exactly. So Attorney Michael pointed out that one of the things that can be done in these cases, we can incorporate that by the testimony from the one into the record. So I would ask that you do that. If, if not, I can read it, but I mean, I would ask you.
We, we, we're already okay with that.
Perfect.
But we, I'll, I'll let you go ahead and just kind of address the five criteria without interruption, since this is so similar to the last one.
Yeah, sure. So not against public interest, because obviously allowing it, it's not gonna, the public, it's just gonna decorate the area behind those, that building in an area where seating is. It has no effect on anyone, public driving by. Must be, it's consistent with the spirit of the ordinance because the sign ordinance wasn't written for this. It was written for drivers. These are signs that are more for the sake of patrons, that would have been indoor art in, in the case of indoor seating. This is substantial justice would be done if they can leave them, because they can leave that area decorated for their patrons. It's not diminish the value of the properties. Again, as both stated before, the surrounding property values, you can't see it from any of the surrounding properties. And then number five, the hardship. There's no substantial relationship between, because this is not what the ordinance was written about, and so there is no relationship. It is, this is to decorate an area, and of course, in part two, the reason, it's a reasonable one to decorate the area.
Absolutely, thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, I'll go and open up the public. Is there anyone looking to speak either in favor or against this petition? All right, I'll close the public. Do I hear a motion?
I will so move that we grant the variance for S.J. Torres, petitioner and Oren H. Connell, family trust owner, under section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit two additional ground signs for a total of three ground signs on a lot where one ground sign is permitted based on existing conditions. The parcel is located at 454 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2, general commercial, aquifer conservation, elderly housing, and town center overlay districts, tax map 5D-4, Lot 54, ZBA case number 2022-24.
Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben. All in favor? All right, 5-0-0. Now on to the next one, and this is going to be covering, these are so strikingly similar. S.J. Torres, petitioner and Oren H. Connell, family trust owner, variance under section 17.10.4 of the zoning ordinance to permit two additional wall signs on a lot where zero are permitted based on existing conditions. The parcel is located at 454 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2, general commercial, aquifer conservation, elderly housing, and town center overlay districts, tax map 5D-4, Lot 54, ZBA case 2022-29. Okay, so to permit two additional wall signs on a lot where zero is permitted is what we're talking about.
Okay, so as before, I'll, for the record, I will submit my prior testimony for both the cases, and then I'll quickly try to do these as quick as I can again, if you want. It's not be contrary to the public interest, having the extra, this wall sign where zero are permitted, it's really a decoration for an outdoor space that is a dining space. It's not for the, what the sign ordinance was written for. Numbered, spirit intent of the ordinance is consistent. That the ordinance was written for drivers and driver confusion and proper advertising. This was not for that purpose, so yes, the spirit intent is met. Substantial justice being done, if they're allowed to keep it, they can have their area decorated nice for their clientele, so it would be substantial justice. It won't diminish private surrounding values because it's not visible from any properties around. And hardship. There's no substantial relationship with the general purpose of the ordinance because this is not what the ordinance, this particular ordinance was written about. This is purely decorating an outdoor dining area, not about signage and the decor, and directing passing motorists onto a site, or not the same purpose. So there is no substantial relationship, and this use is a reasonable one.
All right, any questions from the board?
Public here.
Open up to the public. Anyone looking to speak in favor or against this petition? I will go ahead and close the public.
Makes it easy.
I know. Do I hear a motion?
I'm on a roll. I move that we grant the variance for S.J. Torres, petitioner and Oren H. Connell, family trust owner, under section 17.10.4 of the zoning ordinance to permit two additional wall signs on a lot where zero are permitted based on existing conditions. The parcel is located at 454 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2, general commercial, aquifer conservation, elderly housing, and town center overlay districts, tax map 5D-4, Lot 54, ZBA case number 2022-29.
Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben. All in favor? 5-0-0.
Moving right along.
Yeah. Thank you so much for, for humoring us in this process.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
He's getting answers he wants. He's gonna humor us.
S.J. Torres, petitioner and Oren H. Connell, family trust owner, variance under section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit two 320-square-foot ground signs if the variance in case 2022-24 is granted, which it was, where the maximum allowable area per ground sign is 32 square feet. The parcel is located at 454 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2, general commercial, aquifer conservation, elderly housing, and town center overlay districts, tax map 5D-4, Lot 54, ZBA case 2022-35. And so this is about the size of the ground signs.
So this specific one is the container. And the container is there as a storage thing. It could have been just a container. He painted it. And, you know, art is in the eye of the beholder, but it does qualify as a sign because it has a logo on it. So, so it's a huge sign, so it sounds like a lot. But again, it is basically the western wall of the outdoor dining area, if you will, you know? So it, again, not contrary to public interest because it's not going to create clutter on highways in busy pla, in places where a public is gonna see it. Shouldn't be a problem. Also, I want to incorporate my testimony for the prior three for the record before I continue now. So then, number two, it must be consistent spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance regarding, was regarding signs that are to direct traffic and, and customers. These are, this is really meant to be art for an outdoor dining area. So I don't, I think it is within the spirit of the ordinance. Substantial justice, obviously, if you can leave a sign, it would look a heck of a lot better than a plain container out there. And then it must not diminish the property values. It's, it's, again, it's not really visible for the public, but it, again, stressing up some storage containers, so I think that could only be positive. And then it's unnecessary hardship. Again, no, there is no substantial relationship because this sign is not a typical ground sign, like you'd put a monument ground sign out to let people know to turn in your driveway here. It's not why that's there. This is the side of a dining area. So it is not, there is no substantial relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance and this violation. And then number two, it's a reasonable one. It's reasonable to paint the container, something nice for the patrons back there. Be happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
If this were Pet's Choice, putting those two containers on the end of their building, I would feel a lot differently about this. But having them down the far end and then having two plain, blue, ugly containers sitting there, I would feel differently too. The fact that he's actually dressed them up enhances it. So I have no problem with this.
I agree. I think it's decorative there and stating it's well away from a promotional sign. You can't, you can't even see it from Woodbury.
Right.
All right, I will go ahead and open to the public. Anyone looking to speak in favor or against this petition?
Same people.
We have to do it, though. Close the public. Do I hear a motion?
One last one. I move we grant the variances to S.J. Torres petitioner and Orin H. Connell family trust owner under section seventeen point ten point three of the zoning ordinance to permit two three hundred and twenty square foot ground signs if the, we don't need that, where the maximum allowable area per ground sign is thirty-two square feet. The parcel is located at four fifty-four Daniel Webster Highway in the C two general commercial, aquifer conservation, elderly housing, excuse me, and town center overlay districts, tax map five D hyphen four, lot fifty-four, ZBA case number two zero two two hyphen three five.
Made by Lynn, seconded by Ben, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and I'm sorry, this was such a tedious process. And also for the record, there is a thirty day appeal window that somebody could appeal this, but just have to let you know. All right. Item number seven, Michelle Carricatos petitioner and GTO N H LLC owner, variance under section two point oh two point one of the zoning ordinance to permit a daycare use in the planned residential development overlay district whereas such use is not permitted. Parcel is located at five fifteen Daniel Webster Highway in the R one residential by soils, aquifer conservation, planned residential development overlay, town center, and elderly housing overlay districts, and wellhead protection area, tax map five D dash two, lot C zero zero two, ZBA case twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six. Hello.
Michelle Carricatos. I don't know. There it is.
Perfect.
I'm Michelle Carricatos, owner and director of Joyful Noise LLC here in town. Just to give you a little background before we get into everything, I had an administrative approval for a before and after care program in the state of New Hampshire. When you are before and after care program through state licensing, which I am, you are allowed to have full daycare for teacher workshops, school vacations, snow days, things like that to help accommodate families. I learned through this process that the current zoning doesn't allow for that full daycare piece, so that is what we're discussing tonight.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. All right. So if you could just step through each of the the five criteria from the form and and at the end of each one, we'll stop and see if we have any questions.
Okay. All right, so in order to permit, we're just, like I said, daycare operations for school vacations, snow days, teacher workshops, and potential summer camps. With that said, I put that in there, but I have no such concrete plans to have that implemented. So number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it would fill a need that working parents have in our community.
All right, any questions from the board? Can't either. Please continue.
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the childcare operations would be on select days, not all year round, such as school vacations, teacher workshops, snow days. We would operate per usual, still same standards, just longer hours on certain days.
Okay, so I do have questions about that because maybe I'm maybe I'm misunderstanding the petition a little bit. So you're not proposing having a a full daycare operation, you're just trying to change the hours that you're operating.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because, again, it would fill parents' needs here in town, but also allow continuity for care for children so they're not shuffled here, there, and everywhere. And that's a, as a mom of three, that's a big deal. And so that's something that I would love to have in place for parents.
All right, any questions? All right, please continue.
Okay. Number four, granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding property because we would still hold regular operating standards. In fact, we've actually done a lot to help that area. There was a fence in the back that was pretty forgotten about, and so we've really cleaned the area and continue to just really make it not so much of an eyesore and clean up that that area around the back of the building as well. But also would just bring more business tenants overall, as we have already done because we're next to the laundromat, the Dollar Tree Tractor Supply. I know I personally have contributed to that, and so I think it would just really just add value.
All right, any questions about that? All right. Number five.
Okay, number five, A, owing the following special additions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Explain how the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of the property. So our space is not zoned for that childcare piece, although we were allowed to be there as a before and after care, we just didn't have those extended hour options. When administration approval was granted, I actually didn't realize that because I was looking at the state standards which allow before and after care programs to operate on such days. Not to sound redundant, but snow days, teacher workshops, school vacations, things like that. Looking to add some full days to accommodate parents' schedule would not be allowed with this current variant.
All right, any any questions from the board? I think this is pretty straightforward, so I, I, I think we're good here. I'm going to go ahead and just open this to the public. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone looking to speak against this petition? Quiet crowd. I will go and close the public. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we grant Michelle Carricatos petitioner and J T O N H LLC owner, variance under section two point oh two point one of the zoning ordinance to permit a daycare use in the planned residential development overlay district whereas such a use is not permitted. The parcel is located at five fifteen, located at five fifteen Daniel Webster Highway in the R one residential by soils, aquifer conservation, planned residential development overlay, town center, and elderly housing overlay districts and wellhead protection area, tax map five D dash two, lot C zero zero two, ZBA case number two oh two two dash twenty-six.
Second. All right, motion made by Rodney, seconded by Ben, all in favor? Five zero zero. So as I said earlier, there's a thirty day window where someone could appeal this, just so you're aware, but otherwise, good luck.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, number eight, Stewart's Ambulance Service petitioner and WB Properties LLC owner, special exception under section two point oh two point four E one of the zoning ordinance to permit a limited residential use, an accessory dormitory, to an existing ambulance service use. The parcel is located at twenty-six Columbia Circle, unit D in the I one industrial, aquifer conservation, elderly housing overlay districts, tax map four D dash three, lot twenty-four, ZBA case twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Good evening. That doesn't sound like it.
How's that? Better?
Yes.
Pardon?
Just be close to me.
Good evening. My name is Don Welford. I'm the senior vice president of Stewart's Ambulance Service. And as you mentioned, we're located at twenty-six Columbia Road, Columbia Circle in Merrimack here. We are a non-emergent medical transportation company, and we are now, Stewart's Ambulance is now taking over the space that was formerly occupied by Lifeline Ambulance. We've been in that location for about three years now, and during a recent inspection of the fire department, they indicated to us that we were not allowed to have overnight staffing in that location. There was no permitting for it, nor did our location currently meet the fire codes as designed. So it was with that information that we immediately took action. We have removed all the sleeping quarters from that location. Our crews no longer sleep there. As a source for us, since we are a twenty-four hour corporation, we do in fact have hotel rooms at the Holiday Inn so that now our crews are sleeping there in order to stay compliant with your codes and also for the safety of our staff. We're here tonight requesting that we be allowed to house our staffs in this location, which has been used as an ambulance provider for over twelve years, and we're asking your permission to receive a variance in order to construct based on fire code as well as all building codes, necessary space for our crews to sleep in the overnights in the location of twenty-six Columbia Circle. So that's basically a brief history of why I'm here before you tonight.
All right, thank you for that. All right, so there is a, looks like four criteria for the special exception.
Yes.
We just asked that you you read those points in, and in between each of them, we may have questions.
Sure.
Thank you.
The first one, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use or uses in terms of overall community development because the response is that the location's been used for this purpose for over a decade. Unfortunately, there were several ownership changes prior to it being owned by Stewart's Ambulance, and the first owner thought that he was allowed and represented to us as the new owners that we were allowed to have overnight staffing. We only learned recently through the inspection that this in fact was not true, and so we had to then remove our overnight staffing capabilities.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, please continue.
Question number two, the uses developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood and shall produce no diminution of real estate values in the neighboring area because this location has been used for this purpose without impacting any real estate values. We have no reason to believe that it would impact real estate values in the future. The building owner is here, if you would like to ask her any questions regarding the values.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, if I could just go back to the first one.
Sure.
Your non-emergency.
Correct.
What would the purpose of being available twenty-four hours if it was non, it sounds like you would provide a service by almost like a by appointment?
We service multiple hospitals, so I'll give you an example. If they have a patient in a waiting room that's come from a nursing facility and it's midnight and they want that patient returned on a discharge back to the nursing facility, we do that type of transport. But what we don't do is someone calls nine one one and we go flying out the door with lights and sirens.
Can I ask how many people on average spend the night in in that building?
On an average, here in the Merrimack location, there's no more than five people per night.
And it's common that you would get two, three, four calls on any given night to transport people?
We would love to get two or three or four calls during the night because that would help to pay the bills, but on the average, given the locations that we service hospital wise, I think three or four is probably a more reasonable number during the overnight hours. During the daytime hours, it's considerably more as there's more transports and discharges from hospitals and facilities going back and forth.
Thank you.
John, how many vehicles?
In the bays themselves, I look at Dean, we have three, three vehicles.
All right. And then on to D.
C says there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians because our employees are all specifically trained in operating emergency vehicles, and we don't believe there have been any issues over the last ten plus years that an ambulance company has been located there. And then, I'm sorry.
No, no, continue.
Okay, and question D, that an adequate parking area is provided for motor, motor vehicles on the premises because we really have had no problem. It's a large open space for parking, and so there's never really been any problems at all with parking for our vehicles of our employees or anyone that may be visiting the base.
Yeah, this is a, this has actually been this type of petition for special exception for accessory dwelling. We've been seeing a lot of recently, so there, there are quite a few businesses that have been notified that this needs to go through the zoning board, so I certainly thank you for that. And it is a special exception, so unlike a variance, there's not the same burden of proof for the necessity since it's already technically allowed by the ordinance. We just have to review it.
Sure.
But if there's, do we have any other comments from the board before I go ahead and open the public?
And they do have to go before planning for site approval, I believe. It's all the conditions. Site plan approval.
Just one clarity on that. Whatever dormitory space we do build will be confined to the current inside of the building. We will not be adding any additional structures to what exists.
Okay.
It's an internal construction.
All right, thank you for that. So I'll go ahead and open the public portion. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone looking to speak against this petition? All right, I'll go ahead and close. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I make a motion. I remember, actually, my father had to get transported from Nashville to Boston. We had to wait for an ambulance come out of Milford to Nashua, so having, it is a, you know, it does happen.
It does happen.
I get it, so I'd like to make a motion to approve Stewart's Ambulance Service petitioner and WB Properties LLC owner.
Rodney has a question.
If I could ask a question through the chair to Casey. If this is approved, does all of like Columbia Circle, Mac, they get apartment rights? Or is this specific to this business?
It would be specific to this business.
Okay, so any contractors that have offices there, they can't?
Yeah, no, yeah, because this is specific to the information that was presented tonight.
Right, our application refers to unit D.
Thank you.
Which is our unit.
So move forward with a motion approved Stewart's Ambulance Service petitioner, WB Properties LLC owner, special exception under section two point zero two point four E one of the zoning ordinance to permit a limited residence use accessory dormitory to an existing ambulance service use. The parcel is located at twenty-six Columbia Circle, unit D, in the I one industrial aquifer conservation, elderly housing, overlay district. in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation, Elderly Housing, Overly Districts, Tax Map 4D-3, Lot 24, ZBA Case Number 2022-27. With criteria, staff recommends that, that one, the petitioner shall obtain site plan approval from the planning board for the addition of the limited residential use accessory dormitory to the ambulance service use. And two, the petitioner shall be subject to all applicable building and fire code requirements and inspections that will be necessary following planning board approval.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Patrick, seconded by Rodney. All in favor? Five, zero, zero. So again, there's a 30-day window where somebody could appeal this, unlikely as it may be. But other than that, good luck.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item number nine, Gregory P. and Lindsay M. Hooven, petitioner owner, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of an accessory dwelling unit 12.66 feet from the front property line whereas 50 feet is required. Parcels located at 5 Crestview Circle in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 7B, Lot 14-05, ZBA Case Number 2022-30.
Good evening. For the record, Tony Basso with Keach Nordstrom, representing the applicant, Gregory and Lindsay Hooven. So this property located at 5 Crestview Circle. Basically, they want to do an ALU. Because of the way that property is situated, beginning and right at the start of the cul-de-sac, the way the setback comes in, as well as being pinched off by a slope and in a wetland. Let me see if I can get a picture of this, maybe? Okay, good. All right, so there's an existing home here. And you can see the front yard setback right along there. And then it curves for this, the cul-de-sac bulb. But also over here, we got a wetland. And it doesn't show on this plan, but there's topography, it slopes directly down to the sweatland. So the, in order to, because the way the house is situated, the way the wetland is on site, the cul-de-sac, we end up needing a variance to allow to get an ALU in a configuration that my client can use. So I will read the pieces into the record, if you like.
Absolutely. So yeah, we do have that. So I guess, based on what you said, there's really no other area this ADU could be built because of the slope.
Right. Yeah, there's no, yeah, there is no other place to go. If you, if you go on this side, we're into the side yard setback here. This is all a slope back here going down to the wetland. So it kind of, we're pinned in on this end. So the driveway, you'd still come in, there's a garage here, and then you'd have a garage entrance here. And this is the ALU. So it'll be a nice, still a nice long driveway. So it won't be like a short, close to the road or crazy turning movements or anything. So, all right, I'll read these into the record. So not contrary to public interest. This isn't contrary to public interest. Obviously, the ALU is allowed. But the reason for the setback is typically to allow for a future expansion of natural progression in roads as they go. But this is a cul-de-sac. There's no really where else to go. So it's not against the public interest here. And it's, there's still enough green spaces, no short driveway or anything like that being created here. It's actually going to stay right where it is. It must be consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance, granting the variance with allowed to construct the ALU in a cohesive manner with the existing home. And so therefore, it's, you know, it makes sense that. And where the ordinance, the spirit of the ordinance is, the front yard is to ensure safe access to the homes, allow, and keeping clear obstructions in the right-of-way and view corridors for drivers. Obviously, this is not an issue here. It's in the cul-de-sac at the end of a road. So it's absolutely within the spirit of the ordinance.
All right. Any questions?
I should have stopped after number one. Sorry.
No worries. Any questions on those two?
I would just like the record to be consistent with state and local laws and ordinances. So ALU is really ADU, additional dwelling unit.
Okay, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number three. It must result in substantial justice. Obviously, there would be substantial justice if my client can construct their house. The ADU and the method, that would be cohesive for their unit. Will not diminish surrounding property values. It won't submit, it won't, it's a substantial building addition that will not diminish values. And there was a record submitted for the record from a Realtor about stating that for the record as well. And then number five. The hardship. So given the characteristics of this property, the cul-de-sac, the steep slope going down to the wetlands, the positioning of the home, it, no other option to make a cohesive ADU on this property. So I think, given that the property conditions, it absolutely meets the hardship. And then the use is a reasonable one. It allows them an ADU, which is allowed. It's just, in this case, a little too close. But, and again, and the, all the reasons why you'd have these setbacks don't really apply in a cul-de-sac situation where no view corridors or additional widenings would ever be needed if cul-de-sac doesn't really go anywhere. Also, a number of neighbors submitted letters supporting it for the record. And that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions from the board?
How big is the primary residence?
I have no idea.
How big would the ADU be?
If you could just please. Also, if you could just identify yourself in the microphone.
So this is a garage and an accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the garage is to be compliant with adding a parking space for the ADU. So the primary residence, what you see here, also part of it with the cul-de-sac is there's drainage at the end of the cul-de-sac. So there's no future development for a throughway there. Also, our property line, there's nobody to the right of us. And when we said we had letters from our neighbors, that was every neighbor who said that they approved of it.
Okay. Could I just have you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, sir. Greg Hooven.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep. Okay, so I'm just trying to, so I see the driveway and then so, so the driveway comes in here. So down here, that's the garage. And then the ADU is right over here? Yes, sir. So the part that would conflict is the addition of the garage as well as the front part of the ADU. And the reason for that, as mentioned, is because of the slope and the drainage. There was no way, one, physically to build it because of the wetlands behind, but aesthetically, if we were to do it, it would have just been a long addition. We can't go back any further because of the way the property slopes.
Okay. Sure. No, I get that. You get that. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. What I'll go ahead and do is open this up to the public. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone looking to speak against this petition? All right, I'll go and close the public. And do I hear a motion?
I will so move that we grant the variance to Gregory P. and Lindsay M. Hooven, petitioner owners, under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of an accessory dwelling unit 12.66 feet from the front property line whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at 5 Crestview Circle in the R1 Residential by Soles and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 7B, Lot 14-05, ZBA Case Number 2022-30.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben. All in favor? Five, zero, zero. So you are.
Thank you very much.
Good to go. Just remember, as I already said at lunchtime tonight, you have a 30-day window.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. Good luck. So for the next set of petitions, 10, 11, 12, 13, I'm going to read them all in and we are going to be voting separately, however, treating it as it's one petition essentially. So I'll go ahead and read them in. Bowers Landing of Merrimack, petitioner owner, equitable waiver of dimensional requirements under Section 15.04.0C of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing deck to remain 48.54 feet from the side property line whereas 50 feet is required. Parcels located at Toby Circle in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 1D, Lot 1-4, Case ZBA 2022-31. The next is equitable waiver of dimensional requirements under Section 15.04. Just looks like it's, hold on a second. No, I'm trying to read this. It looks like it's the same. Yeah. All right, to remain, okay, I see. The second was to remain 48.05 feet from the side property line whereas 50 feet is required. Same property, Case 2022-32. The third was an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements under the same section to remain 48.2 feet from the side property line whereas 50 feet is required. Same property, Case 2022-33. And then the fourth is an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements where the deck will remain 48.11 feet from the side property line whereas 50 feet is required. Same property, Case 2022-34. All right.
So you'll read the five criteria for one, which will represent.
Right. Yep, it's actually three. Yep. So again, are you ready? I don't want to.
Oh, yeah, not that. So I read in the four different petitions, so.
So, all right. Tony Basso, again, representing the applicant regarding Bowers Landing regarding these equitable waivers. So what happened here? These condo units were built. We did the normal process. We certified the foundations. They were within the building envelopes as required. The buildings were built. And then at the end, we were required to do as-built for both the condominium as well as for the final certificates of occupancy. And we observed that four decks nicked one of the 50-foot setbacks there. So this is an equitable waiver because it wasn't something that anyone, you know, wasn't, it was, we did, the process was followed and it just, it's something that happened. So there are three criteria here that I'll read. But so what it is here is these units on this plan, it's like where the, there are three units up the side here. You can just see the slight encroachment of the deck right there. It's like between 1.18 and 1.95 feet. So on the blow-up plan, you can see there's, they're just barely crossing over. And then there is a picture, it's sideways in here, but it's, you can see the, you know, what's going on out there. It's actually just a grass area and the deck overhangs. There it is right here. So this is the back area. This is looking down the row of units. You can see these decks, just, it's a big grass area. The woods are way back here. And these just slightly overhang what the setback is, which is actually right, probably close to where the posts are. And the overhang part is over it. So. So I'll explain, the first criteria explains how the non-conformity discovered and the structure was substantially completed. And after a lot of the division of land had been transferred to a bona fide purchaser. So as part of the as-built KNA located the site features. And at that time, we discovered these four decks in encroachment. The buildings were already built. And it was, we were doing the final as-bills for all of the, they, they give COs along the way. So these were all sold and gone, but you know, they hold the last few, you get the as-bills done. So unfortunately, this was found all the way at the end after everything's done. Explain how the physical or dimensional violation does not constitute a public or private nuisance or diminution of value to the properties in the area or interfere or adversely impact, affect any present or permissible future use of the property. Well, this, it's barely overhanging. It's a, it's a, under two feet. It's in a lawn area. It's, it doesn't, there's no, it doesn't impact anybody. It doesn't impact the value. It's just a fully cleared landscaped area. So it didn't change anything. Number three, explain how the cost of correction outweighs the public benefit. The public wouldn't see a difference here. It would just be back a foot or two. And it would cost a fortune because cutting these off and redoing all the rails, it's a lot of money to, everything has to be re-braced. And it wouldn't, there would be no difference here that the public would notice. And that's it. Be happy to answer any questions?
Any questions from the board? All right. We will go ahead and open this to the public. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor or against this petition? Or for petitions? All right. I will go ahead and close the public. Do I hear motions?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we grant Bowers Landing Merrimack, petitioner owner, equitable waiver of dimension requirements under Section 15.04.0C of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing deck to remain 48.54 feet from the side property line whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at Toby Circle in the R1, in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation District, Tax Map 1D, Lot 1-4, ZBA Case 2022-31.
I'll second.
Yeah, we do.
We have to vote individually, correct?
All right. So motion made by Rodney, seconded by Ben. All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Next motion?
I make a motion that we grant Bowers Landing Merrimack, petitioner owner, equitable waiver of dimension requirements under Section 15.04.0C of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing deck remaining 40, remain 48.5 feet from the side property line whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at Toby Circle in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 1D, Lot 1-4, ZBA Case Number 2022-32.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Rodney, seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Lynn? Five, zero, zero.
I make a motion that we grant Bowers Landing of Merrimack, petitioner owner, equitable waiver of dimension requirements under Section 15.0C, 15.04.0C of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing deck to remain 48.2 feet from the side property line whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at Toby Circle in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 1D, Lot 1-4, ZBA Case Number 2022-32. Districts, tax map 1D, lot dash 14, ZBA case 2022 dash 33.
This time Rodney made the motion and Lynn seconded it. All in favor? Five zero zero.
I make a motion that we grant Bowers Landing Merrimack, petitioner owner, equitable waiver of dimension requirements under section 15.04 point C of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing deck to remain 48.11 feet from the side property line whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at Toby Circle in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 1D, lot 1 dash 4, ZBA case 2022 dash 34.
Motion made by Rodney, seconded by Lynn. All in favor? Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes. That's okay. Five zero zero. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. You dropped something.
All right. Item number 14, Keith Gorman, petitioner, and Kenneth and Calvin Noon and Vivian Price, owners, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the development of a two-single-family residential lots upon completion of required subdivision improvements that do not meet the R1 residential by map district dimensional standards. Parcels located at five and six Ash Lane in the R1 residential by map district, tax map 6A, lot 9 dash 1, tax. Oh, and, okay. And lot 9 dash 2, ZBA case 2022 dash 36.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Members Attorney Greg Michael. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Keith Gorman, and the family that you mentioned, the owners regarding the property located at Ash Lane, specifically lots 9 dash 1 and 9 dash 2, which were approved as lots. I've put up the subdivision plan test. This, this is the approved plan that was recorded at the registry of deeds. And Ash Lane comes in heading easterly. The first lot is in this location, 9 dash 1, this is 9 dash 2. And the idea was to extend Ash Lane, that's currently a cul-de-sac, to this particular point and create the appropriate frontage for these lots. That was done, that plan was recorded and approved, it was approved and recorded in 1989. A little bit of history. This particular area used to be, when this lot was approved, in just the residential zone. And the history of this area is kind of fascinating. It dates back to the late 89, 90, 91 timeframe, when there was a proposal to develop approximately 400 acres in the southwest of the area of town. 19, this is back when, 1988, I believe. That wasn't received with open arms. It was going to be a cluster. There was a discussion about extending the water lines and sewer lines. The water was there, the sewer had to be extended. That went to the town council, it was the Board of Selectmen at that time, I believe. But regardless, again, it wasn't that well-received and the town felt at that point that they wanted to create an area that would require, in all instances, all instances, the full R1 lot requirements, regardless of utilities. And it was interesting, it was pulled together in an effort not to make it look like there was discrimination. There was another parcel that was put into the mix. And I'll tell you where it was, it was the town dump. That's the other area, kind of up in the north central west of the area of Merrimack that was put in. And those two areas became an R1 zone mapped. And that map zone required that you adhere to the 100,000 square feet, you adhere to the 300-foot depth, 250 feet of frontage, and so forth for lots to exist. These lots came into being just before that occurred. I want to make that clear. These were slight soils. The minimum was 40,000. These lots are both 60,000-plus square feet. And they had appropriate frontage once the roadway was built. In fact, the frontage equals the severe soils, they're in excess of 250 feet. It met all other requirements at that time. Now it does not meet the depth requirement. We have over 200 feet, but not 300 feet. We're able to meet all of the setbacks. The lots have septic approvals. So what happened? Basically, under the statutory scheme that exists, if lots are approved and you don't create substantial development, you can lose that, kind of that grandfather's status if you don't proceed and do something, and nothing was done. And unfortunately, the next piece of the puzzle comes into the mix, and that's the economy. Through 89, 90, and in the midsummer to early, early fall of 91, what happened in the state of New Hampshire? Eight major banks went under. Therefore, it was difficult, basically impossible, for the landowner to round up the funds at that time to develop this and to do the work that needed to be done to, in effect, reinforce and keep those lots in existence. So it's kind of a double whammy that occurred. We had a zoning change that was based upon maintaining large lot sizes that encompassed other small areas of land around those parcels, and we had an economic issue that kind of drove the bus into the ground at that particular point. So the two issues here, we have two lots that were approved, are approved, and I would point out that under 676-4, the town never revoked the approval of these lots. That's allowed under subsection D of that statute. They could have revoked it. They didn't. They're just there. They're lots of record that we can't pull a building permit on because of the two problems that I've indicated, lot size and depth. We believe that that really is not a significant, significant issue at this time. Let's take a look at public interest, the first criteria. The basic zoning objective of the R1 mapped zone is to, again, require all development to be these large, large lots. It was designed to preserve large tracts of land. That was the idea. It was never intended to affect people. It happened to be on the edge of the paintbrush with lots that got kind of sucked into the vacuum, if you will, of the R1 map zone like this lot did. So that was the idea. When we look at public interest, we've got to take a look at, does this particular request alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Let me show you something. I've got two, two, two kind of area plans, one heading kind of north, one heading towards the southwest. You can see the two lots, you can see the existing cul-de-sac, the futures cul-de-sac, this lot, this lot, this lot, these two lots. And you can see these, the large grouping of lots, you know, very, very close, don't meet the R1 map standard. To suggest that these two lots are out of character, these at least look like normal lots, these are kind of interesting triangulated lots, but again, they're, they're legal now, they've got houses built on them. But I would point out that, that this area is not necessarily an area with large parcels of developed or undeveloped land. That, that just isn't the case. So it's pretty clear that allowing these lots that were subdivided in 89 to continue to exist and be built does not significantly alter the area. The next question is, does the request threaten the public health, safety, and welfare? The answer to that is easy. It does not. These lots, we've got the septic approvals. In fact, they're slight soils lots. They're at least an acre, acre and a half, acre and a half in size. There's no, you know, there's nothing that we can determine that would threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. Therefore, we believe that it's not contrary to the public interest to allow these particular lots to be built on with those two variance requests. Are there any questions by the board? Apparently not. We'll move to number two. Spirit of the ordinance, as the Supreme Court held in a Castorrod and Gunn case, these are basically conjoined because the court said, finally, everybody was waiting for this for a number of years, especially people like me that do this work. You know, it can't be within the spirit of the ordinance, it violates the, the public interest. So the court finally said, these things are sort of the same, but they're not really totally the same. In this case, you take a look, you take a look at the, the impact, you take a look at what, what the restriction is, you take a look at exactly what's going on and what the ordinance was designed to prohibit. In this case, the spirit of the ordinance was to, again, try and maintain these large parcels of land, and if they were to be developed, they would be developed with the large 100,000 square foot lots. So we don't believe that the spirit of the ordinance in any way is being violated by the allowance of use of lots that, again, currently exist. Any questions by the board on that particular criteria?
I actually have a, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So you, I think you mentioned earlier on that this was essentially shut down by the Board of Selectmen at the time. Was it a plan like this or?
No. This plan is approved. In the town at that time, I was around, the, there was, the atmosphere was, they wanted to preserve some of these larger parcels of land in the southwest and kind of central northwest of the town. And a zoning ordinance went to the voters and they created this R1 zone mapped. The R1 zone is the zone that requires 100,000 square feet, 250 feet of frontage, 300 feet of depth, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? But in the regular R1 zone, if you have utilities like sewer and water, you can cluster that land. You can create a different form of subdivision in those, on that R1 land. The R1 mapped zone, everything has to be 100,000, doesn't matter if you have water and sewer. Now, there's, if you have public water and sewer to your lot, you, you, and you've got, let's say you've got four acres of land, you say, I'd like to subdivide one lot off. Without zoning approval, you can't do that.
Okay.
Because it's, it, it requires, it requires the sizing, everything about the R1 zone, regardless of soils, regardless of utilities, you still have to comply with that large lot requirement. It's, it's funky. But anyway, so the town votes this in. In an effort, again, there was some concern about development of this large tract that I believe the town now owns. The town, I believe, bought that tract of land, there was an article to buy it. And, and it's my best recollection now. I'm just saying, shortly thereafter, I think the town actually purchased this large parcel of land in the southwest area of town. But in any event, I'm, I'm not here, you know, to.
Yeah.
Trigger that issue. I'm just pointing out that it wasn't the, the select people that did it, it was the town voted to create this area to help protect some of these large parcels of land in Merrimack.
I see what you're saying, okay. So that had nothing to do with the Selectmen at the time? It had to do with the, all right.
Yeah, no. And so anyway, that's, that's the gist of, of the difference between R1 mapped and just R1. R1 is generally severe soils. R2 moderate, R3 slight, you know, with utilities. It makes a difference if you look at 3.02 of our ordinance, you take a look at it and it gives you various options if you have, you know, water and sewer versus no water and sewer and the types of soils.
Okay.
Substantial justice. Again, this is a balancing test. I've mentioned it to the board before. You're looking at public rights versus private rights. You know, is there a public, a significant public gain or benefit by saying, no, you can't use these two lots? The answer is no, there isn't. There isn't. These were approved, they're on the map, they've never been revoked, they're there. The private rights are significant. You know, the landowner took the time and effort, and you know it costs money to do the plans, you know it costs money to come to the board, you know it costs money to deal with these issues, came in good faith to get this subdivided based upon the rules that existed. And it was done and the plan was signed off by the planning board and recorded. The loss to the applicant is, is significant. Plus, the applicant was confronted with lousy economic conditions to help allow this thing to move forward. Again, it's, it's, it's a balancing test. You take a look at this. When you're looking at substantial justice, what's fair? You know, in the Harborside case, the court says, any loss to the individual that is not outweighed, outweighed by a gain to the public is an injustice. And there's no way on God's green earth we can suggest for a minute that the loss to the individuals outweighed by some public gain by not allowing use of two subdivided lots that are still, still in play. That's the way I'll leave it. Any questions about that by the board?
So, I'm just trying to understand. So your client is looking to clear-cut both of those properties and just build a bunch of homes? I mean, your, your client's looking to clear-cut those properties and just build a bunch of homes?
No, no, it's a single-family lot.
These are just. I was, because I was reading this, I was reading what was hearing that, and I'm just trying to listen at the same time. So let me sure I'm listening to it right.
Single-family lots.
Okay.
The drive, there's a driveway now to the house that's on the far lot.
Yeah, I was, which was my other question, that, so this borders that home there, right?
There's a home, there's a home on that.
Yeah. The driveway all the way down.
Hang on. Home right here now.
All right. That's, yeah, that's what I'm looking at this here.
It's a driveway up to that home.
Okay. So they just want to build two single-family homes on the property?
Two single-family homes on two lots that were legally subdivided in 1989. That's what's going on here, simply stated.
Big property.
Diminishment of value, there won't be. The courts have clearly stated that the use is an allowed use. You've got to really show something significant, show diminishment of value. In this instance, we're talking about a single-family use on a single-family residential lot that doesn't quite meet the size standards. That's what we're looking at. There'd be no significant diminishment of value. Those lots have been in play, they've been in existence for quite some time. Any questions about that? Hardship. These are the only lots that I can find that are approved, interesting enough, approved but not grandfathered, approved but not grandfathered. So there are lots of record, approved, not grandfathered, with no development on them. And again, I've given you the rationale why that has occurred. They were legally subdivided. The other non-conforming lots in the area have buildings on them. This lot was, in effect, sabotaged by a zoning change that kind of stopped the ball, stopped the clock, so to speak, as far as development is concerned. There's no fair and substantial relationship between any public purpose of the ordinance as it relates to these lots. The public purpose, as I've stated, I'm repeating myself, I apologize, it was to, again, try to preserve large tracts of land in the areas of the residential R1 by map zone. It really has no particular significance to two lots that have been subdivided prior to that occurring. So there's really no significant, you know, relationship but, but between the two. You know, while there's always, I like to say to boards, well, there's always a remote relationship, there's always a remote relationship to anything, because after all, any variance is a variance from what the rules seem to say. But clearly, it's not substantial in this case. These not, lots are not part of a cluster, they're not being reduced or changed, we're just going to do them, we're going to develop it the way it was supposed to be developed, and the use is clearly reasonable. That's part of the criteria for hardship. Again, residential use in the residential zone is reasonable. And if you don't think that applies, the second part of hardship also applies, only to the following special conditions that distinguish it. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance. Well, it can't be. Without some variance, we can't use it in strict conformance. These will sit, and they need a variance to enable the reasonable residential use that was planned for and approved in 1989. Thank you. Any questions?
I mean, it seems pretty straightforward. I appreciate you clarifying that, Attorney Michael. I, I mean, they're building two homes and given the property, he's going to have some good-sized amount of land. Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward.
All right. I'll go ahead and open this to the public. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone looking to speak against this? I know. I know. A wild crowd. I'll close the public and entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Keith Gorman petitioner and Kenneth and Calvin Noon and Vivian Price owners variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the development of two single family resident lots, residential lots upon completion of required subdivision improvements that do not meet the R1 residential by map district dimensional standards. Parcels are located at 5 and 6 Ash Lane. The R1 residential by map tax, residential by map district tax map 6A Lot 9-1 and tax map 6A Lot 9-2 ZBA Case Number 2022-36 with the following criteria. One, the petitioner shall either construct to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department or provide a bond slash certi, certi, sorry, if I mispronounce that, for the completion of the roadway improvements to Ash Lane per the approval sub, the approved subdivision plan signed by the planning board on July 26, 1989. HCRD Plan Number 23673.
Okay. Motion made by Patrick, seconded by Rodney. All in favor? Five zero zero, so. Thank you. All right. So agenda item number 15, Tanya Keefe petitioner owner variance under section 2.02, point four, point B of the zoning ordinance to permit a personal service establishment in the I-1 Industrial District. Parcels located at 31 Railroad Ave in the I-1 Industrial Aqua for Conservation, Elderly Housing, and Town Center Overlay Districts Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 87, ZBA Case 2022-37.
Yeah, I'm Tanya Keefe. I am
Did you have light?
Get lights on.
That's been bright?
Yeah, I can, I can, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I'm Tanya Keefe. I recently actually purchased 31 Railroad Ave from Dave and Dolly Coda. And I am actually trying to subsidize some of the costs. So, and my business runs out of, actually, can I give you a, my approach?
So we, we actually can't accept documents on the night of?
Oh, okay.
So I do apologize. We do have a map, though.
Okay. I, my business operates out of that whole 9,600 square feet.
Okay.
The front of it here is my lunchroom and a bathroom. I was approached by Dee from Bob and Denise Hair Salon. She was in the building that is being raised by Rivet. And so she doesn't want to go out of business. She just wants to still cut hair. It's going to be just a single station and a single cut station and a single washing station for her. So I, I said I would make this for her. When I purchased the building, before I moved in 15 years ago, Batter's Up was there. So Dave and Dolly ended up getting a variance for it to be a commercial property. So I had thought that that had held, came with the, with the building, but it didn't. So when I went to try to do this for Denise, I was told that I would need a variance because this is a industrial building zone. So this would be considered commercial.
Okay.
That's my background.
So
That's what I'm trying to do.
I think that's understandable.
Okay.
The, the only thing that I, I do ask is we do have to go through the, the
Sure.
points of the variance.
Yeah.
And I, I guess I'm just going to ask that you're a little bit more specific when you're going through them because there's Yeah.
Right, so, okay. So number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the space pretty much already exists. I have been there for 15 years. And I'm just trying to change, basically give her one room. It's not going to affect the public at all. She actually is going to do it by appointment only. So there's not going to be a lot of traffic. And she's not going to be working late at night. And so it's not going to be open the whole entire time. Like, my business is open from nine to five. She's going to be pretty much open from nine to six.
Okay. Any questions regarding that? All right, can move on to item number two.
The spirit. Again, it's going to be by appointment only. It's not going to, it's going to help her, keep her in business. 98% of the building is already my, operated by my, my company that hasn't changed. Well, anything won't change.
Okay. Any questions about that? All right. Number three.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because I guess it improves my property. I am redoing a bathroom, making a better space for her. I
I know it's kind of tough because a lot of the things you said do support that. And, and as much as I would love to say, you, you kind of already said that because of X, Y, and Z. We, we've, we've gotten in trouble for advising people what to, what to put in these boxes. So, but I, I do understand. Any questions from the board? All right. So number four.
This is probably going to be the same thing, right? I'm granting the variance would not diminish the value of the surrounding properties. I'm not changing anything. The, the, the whole building, the envelope of the building is going to stay completely the same. Again, I'm just really trying to, I'm trying to, as 10,000 square feet, I'm only trying to change less than 300 square feet of it.
Oh, it, it, it's perfectly understandable in this particular case where you're not actually making any kind of material change to the building, so.
Right.
It's understandable.
Plenty of parking there. I mean, we, I only have 10 employees. So, I mean, there's probably 25 parking spots there, probably even more. Not that she's going to need very much either because it's not going to be, it's going to be one person at a time.
And so the, for the unnecessary hardship piece, number five. Essentially, this is kind of a, a test of saying where the unnecessary hardship lies between you and, and public interest. So although you have essentially said that over the course of this, you, you just want to make sure that you explain to us how the benefits to yourself or to, to the, your tenant, your future tenant outweigh any benefit the public could possibly have for us denying this. Does that make sense?
Not really. Can I call for support?
So again, what I was basically just saying is that you have kind of addressed this. You, you have. But for the purpose of how we conduct the, the zoning board, I just kind of need you to say, well, actually, and if you could identify yourself in the
My name is Lou Milano.
Okay, thank you.
Having her here will help me maintain the property. And
You, you're free to, you're free to speak.
It's on.
No, it's on. Yeah. Having this tenant is certainly going to help in improving the overall income that the building can produce, thereby allowing her to maintain it to the degree that's been maintained in the past. And there is no downside to the community. This building is pretty well hidden as far as the butters are concerned. She has a logging company on one in front of her, the other building she owns. And then there's another building down by the railroad tracks, which is quite commercial. They don't move very much. I never see the vehicles move. So very few portions of this community can even see that property. People probably have lived in this town forever and never been down that road.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you so much. What I'll go ahead and do now is just open this up to the public. We have a very wild crowd tonight, so. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor or against this petition? All right, I'll close the public.
I do have a question. I drove by and, and looked at the bounds of the property. And I noticed on one side, it's kind of a mess with the fencing.
Okay. Uh, yes, actually, Dave talked, he put that up before the trees had grown. So now there's trees over there. I, I mean, I guess we can, I never haven't even looked at that yet. Facing Railroad Ave?
Yeah, it looks like it's on, it's on the corner with, there's a house. As you come around the corner, there's a house right there. And it's the property line between the two of them. It looks like the fence has come down and the trees have been pushed onto that property.
It might be.
Yeah, that would be a 29 Railroad Ave. Probably never taken a real close look at it.
I think it's 31. No, no, no.
There's 29 and 31s on that same lot.
Yeah, but it's the house. As you come down Railroad Ave, just as you're turning right, there's a house right there. And in the back, there's, there's a, a little garage and there's a gazebo. And there's a fence along that line between that house and yours. And it looks like that fence, probably the trees have pushed that fence down. And not that that's necessarily part of this, but I would hope that you would take a look at that.
Sure.
And fix that.
Yeah, this is, I mean, I signed a month ago and, yeah, we haven't, um
Yeah, I know, I'm just, just a comment.
Thank you.
We can get that this week.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we grant Tanya Keefe petitioner owner variance under section 2.02, point four, point B of the zoning ordinance to permit a personal service establishment in the I-1 Industrial District. The parcel is located at 31 Railroad Ave in the I-1 Industrial Aqua for Conservation, Elderly Housing, and Town Center Overlay Districts Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 87, ZBA Case 2022. Should the board find a petition meets the variance criteria, recommend, the staff recommends the approval of the petitioner shall obtain administrative approval from the community development for the proposed personal services. Second.
All right, motion made by Rodney, seconded by Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So five zero zero, this passes. Again, just like the earlier ones, there is a 30-day window where someone could appeal this, as unlikely as that may sound. But other than that, good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening. Do we have any discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern? All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of the July 27th. What's that?
As printed.
As printed.
I'll second.
Okay.
Leave me hanging, team. Leave me hanging.
Put it on, I thought you were going to second.
Motion made by Rodney, seconded by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero.
I move adjourned.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Casey, good luck.
No?
This is your last one, right?
No.
We're going to miss you. Good luck.
Yeah, we're going to miss you, Casey.
You should come around just to visit.
Yeah.
No.
We're so much fun.